Okay.
Yes.
Um, we only have one attendee.
That's all that's there.
Okay, as long as, as long as they can observe the meeting, we don't want to repeat of last week.
No, we just started the webinar, Jeff, so everything's good.
Thank you.
There's been no problems with my controls, so we're ready to go.
How was the, how did we post this meeting?
The same as the other. We posted it and I sent out an email.
Alright, the.
There's five now, it's growing, so there's people getting in.
Okay. Uh, so we'll go ahead and start. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Alright, good morning, everybody. Welcome to our work session this morning. We're gonna start with a redo of our 2020 City of Des Moines resident survey findings. These are important and we apologize to everybody. When we discovered that our attendees, hopeful attendees were unable to see it and there was no simulcast, we terminated our meeting and hopefully you all are back for the restart of this. It's really good, important information and we, we do this periodically to, in, in terms of the survey, to find out how people are feeling and thinking about the city of Des Moines and, and the work that we do. Scott, I think I'll kick it over to you and you can give us sort of a preview of the presentation and then let's get going.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, council members, Scott Sanders, City Manager. So yes, we do have our two topics this morning that were originally scheduled for the 23rd and the first of which is our every two-year resident survey that we do in partnership under contract with ETC and we have Robert on this call to help with the presentation. And so, yes, with last week, we, Robert was able to present information that is available and has been available since Monday morning on our website, the city's website. That video can be watched and see that part of the presentation. For this morning, I've asked that he summarize the information, just spend a few minutes on the trends and the recap, if you will, and allow for the council to ask additional questions that you may have and then we can move on to the, to the second topic. Again, this information is available, not only the PowerPoint, but also the full presentation is available on the city manager's website. That's something for the public, you can find pretty easily by going on to our city website and doing a search on resident survey and it'll take you to this, so. With that, I think I'll go ahead and pass it over to, to Robert to kind of summarize and take whatever council questions there may be.
Thank you, Scott. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Robert Haycock, a senior project manager with ETC Institute. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening, or after morning, I mean. See, I'm already thinking it's still nighttime this morning. As I, as instructed, I will try to go through fairly rapidly here, just kind of recapping the presentation that we did last week. Pa's gonna help me here, so when I say slide, she'll advance that slide, please. This is a footprint of ETC Institute and the work that we've done across the country. Slide please. Agenda here, you'll see, we'll quickly go through all of these different items and then recap at the end and open for any questions you may have. Next slide. Our purpose is straightforward to provide support to the department directors to align the existing resources with programmatic needs, to measure trends from prior surveys, to gather input from residents to help set budget priorities, and also to compare Des Moines' performance with other similar-sized cities. Next slide. Here's an outline of our methodology, how we got here, the overall approach. We did actually have quite a positive response to the survey this time with 864 responses when we had a goal of 800, so that was very positive. I'd also say that we did an over-sampling of racial minorities. It's not part of this particular presentation, but that information is provided to your staff and my understanding is it'll be followed up on in the future. Next slide. Bottom line upfront, in terms of conclusions of the survey, residents of Des Moines are generally satisfied with the overall quality of the services they receive from the city. The ratings, as we go through, you'll see your ratings for Des Moines are generally higher than the national average for cities of a similar population and then improvements to these areas are four areas that kind of come out of the survey that has priority investment areas for the, the city moving forward, including police services, communications, street maintenance, and community development. Next slide. As we get ready to go through the major findings, I do want to point out that one of the the particulars about surveys is that there can be a lag, so when we see some of these items and the ratings that are there, it doesn't necessarily mean if it's a low mark, for example, that the city hasn't taken steps to address that or move the needle in the right direction. It just may mean that there is a lag between time that some of those improvements are made and when it's actually perceived and recognized by the citizens in the survey. Next slide. We'll go through some of these really quickly, just trend data. You'll see it in a very positive direction. We have three surveys there from 2016, 18, and 2020. Actually, from 2018 to 2020, a 10% increase in satisfaction of the appearance of private property in neighborhoods, which has been a focus point of the city. Next slide. This question was, how's your neighborhood improved over the past five years? And again, you see positive trends moving from 2018 to 2020, a 7% more folks felt that they're satisfied. I should say that's what's in blue there. The blue are satisfied or very satisfied. The pink or reddish color is dissatisfied or very dissatisfied and the white is do not know. That's pretty consistent as we move through. Next slide. Major finding number two, when you look at how Des Moines compares to other similar cities, next slide. As we go through, if you see a blue arrow on the left margin there, that is a positive sign. It means that the city of Des Moines rated higher than, significantly higher than the US population, US similar cities. So overall, we look at the issue of how safe residents feel in their community here. Significant difference in terms of the overall, overall feeling of residents. 75% of residents in Des Moines feel satisfied or very satisfied and, or safe and then 54% of those compared to 54% from other cities. Next slide. Won't go through all of these, but very positive ratings you can see by the blue arrows for police services. Next slide. Overall quality of police protection, this gives you a breakdown of the cities that we have compared you to in this particular survey. I will say that we received some feedback that there's some other cities more in the upper northern Midwest that if we happen to be surveying them in the not-too-distant future, that we will try to reflect those in comparisons in the future. But this is what's available. We, we're a little bit limited just because of the COVID period and some of the cities that have not, have not gone forward with theirs as you did this time. So, anyway, very positive. You can see Des Moines is in the blue line there. The average is kind of in the, the yellowish line on the right and that's, that'll be consistent as we go through. Next slide. Fire services, very positive reaction. Next slide. Again, you see the comparisons here above the national average. Next slide. Satisfaction with parks and recreation services across the board, very positive ratings, especially in those areas you look at, for example, landscaping along city streets, parks and other areas. 69% of your residents are satisfied or very satisfied compared to only 47% nationally. Next slide. Can see just showing a breakdown against particular cities. Next slide. Overall satisfaction with libraries, again, significantly higher than the national average. Next slide. Just showing that a different way. Next slide. Terms of satisfaction with city communication, you do see a couple of red arrows there. That means that you're significantly lower than the US, than the average of the cities we're comparing you to. I would point out again, this is one of those areas that I believe, based on my understanding of the investment the city's made, the changes the city has made, you're seeing a bit of a lag there just between when changes have been made and and the perception of the citizens, but the city introduced a, a new website last year. So it takes a little while sometimes for that to be, to show up. I do think that the overall quality of the website, though, although it's 48 compared to 56, I believe is about 4% higher than it was two years ago. So you're moving in the right direction, you just haven't quite caught up with the national averages yet. But then again, you see some other areas where you're above the national average. Next slide. Next slide. Terms of community development compared to larger cities, how well the city is planning growth, substantially higher than the average, but you do see some other areas where, at, at least at this time, that you're lagging behind that average. Next slide. Next slide. Overall satisfaction with public works engineering, again, the, the blue, the blue arrows show significantly higher than the US average and then the, the few red arrows that you have show significantly lower than the population. And again, we'll see as we go through some of those red arrows, when you actually break them down and compare trend data, you're moving in the right direction, but it just hasn't quite caught up with the national average. Next slide. Just showing that against the benchmarks. Next slide. Major finding number three, the trends, trends are important. They can show that you're moving things in the right direction. Next slide. The largest areas of increases in satisfaction since 2013, you see a, a range of them there. Some of those dealing with library and investment the city has made in its library programs, but also areas like how quickly the police respond to emergencies. Next slide. There have been some areas when we looked long-term decreases since 2013. Next slide. Priorities for investment. This is where we at ETC will take the data not only from, from this survey, but other surveys, compare that, look at how it all push it, goes together and, and outlines those areas based on the citizen rankings of importance and satisfaction to tell you potential areas for investment. Next slide. So one of the things to point out here, you'll see on the left-hand side, category of service, we rank these based on, again, a combination of factors, how satisfied, but also by importance ranking questions that we have. You'll see a very high priority. This is, these are all about police services. You see the visibility of police in neighborhoods ranked as a very high priority and you have several high priorities as well and a medium priority there. Now, just because it's a medium priority doesn't mean the city shouldn't be spending time on that or focused on that, but as we go through, you'll see in some areas you won't have anything really pop out as a very high or a high priority. So we would tell you that those are significant. That's important feedback from your citizens in terms of helping guide your future discussions and investment city resources. Next slide. This is fire services. Again, nothing really popped out in terms of a very high or a high priority, but you do have several areas there as a medium priority. Next slide. Parks and Recreation, high priority. There are a couple of areas there that jumped out. A number of restrooms in city parks and use of green practices in the parks. Next slide. It comes to city communication. Three areas that are ranked as very high priority, level of public investment and involvement, rather, in decision-making, availability of information about programs and services, and the city's efforts to communicate with you. Next slide. Comes to Public Works and Engineering Services, two areas ranked as very high priority, condition of major city streets and condition of streets in your neighborhood. Next slide. Community Development Services, couple of high priorities there. Enforcement of cleanup of dilapidated buildings and cleanup of litter and debris on private property. And you can see very low satisfaction rankings and also jumped out as being items of importance. Next slide. Libraries. Nothing really jumped out as being a high priority or very high priority, but you do have a lot of areas there that are, are medium priority. Again, it doesn't mean that they're not areas of improvement or things that the city should be focused on. It's just in terms of combining those factors together to really highlight areas that the citizens are most concerned about. Nothing really has jumped out in terms of that. Next slide. So in summary, residents are generally satisfied with the overall quality of services they receive from the city. Ratings for Des Moines are generally higher than the national average for cities of a similar population and improvements to these four areas, police services, communications, street maintenance, and community development should be the city's top overall priorities if the, if the city wants to see, to move that needle in terms of customer satisfaction rating. Next slide. With that, I hope that wasn't too fast, but we did want to keep a high-level overview. I'd be happy to try to help answer any questions.
Alright, let's go ahead and, uh, council. Anybody have any thoughts or questions on the presentation and the summary that we just viewed? If so, put your hand up or. Anybody? Josh?
Yeah, I, I was wondering, can we see the, the survey document? Like, that would just be a helpful sort of reference as we go through the actual results. I, I don't, I don't recall if we've seen it. It was shared with us at the front end or not, but if that could be recirculated and I assume this presentation is a summary, so we, we have the full sort of a fuller report as well, right?
Yeah, and it's available online. The, the more in-depth report in is Scott pointed out. Scott, would you again tell everybody where it's available?
Yeah, it's, it's currently on the city manager's page, but it's easiest to find by simply going to the City of Des Moines website and under the search, put resident survey and it'll take you right to it quickest. And it is 160 pages, Robert, or something in that magnitude?
I, you know, Scott, I don't know. It is pretty lengthy and thus the actual survey instrument is on section five of that report that we provided to the city. It, I believe in the version I had, it was page 169, so.
So council members, let me know if there's that, if that section would be helpful for you, for us to print out for you and then get to. We, we can surely do that as well.
Alright, Tony, I see your hand up.
Some of your, some of my questions were answered, but also then to Scott, I guess. So in making the budgets, we're gonna be looking at some of the survey detail and more, you know, some of this was the overview, but in the in-depth review, are all the departments looking at that on how they're addressing their budgets on?
That is correct, and that has been the case in the past with the creation of removing blighted properties, for instance, was showing up on the survey from, from years ago, and so we've, we've been put quite a bit of funds into that and as Robert mentioned, that work just got started last year and so we're not seeing the full benefit of, of those investments yet. And so we'll, we'll continue to look at the opportunities that the residents have, have indicated in the survey that need more investment.
Okay, I just think making that reference too, when we're looking at the budget, so we
Absolutely.
can see the reference to the, the survey that we conducted. That's all.
Scott, this is Robert. If I could just comment, one of the things that I'll see very, very often with cities is the, the work is done, the investment has been made, but sometimes it's just a matter of getting the word out and trumpeting the city's successes and, and all of that. So sharing that information about the changes that have been made is, is, is very important as well.
Absolutely.
Alright. Seeing no further questions or hands up, Scott, let's move on to the next topic.
Okay, I want to thank you again, Robert, for coming back a second time. And Pa Goldberg, Pa for her assistance on this as well. The second item, Mayor, is the Neighborhood Commercial Revitalization Program. We have both Erin with our Development Services Department and I believe Katie may be helping out from her department. Erin, I see you've got your presentation. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Scott. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you. Good morning. I hope everybody had a great holiday weekend. Um, we are rolling out a neighborhood revitalization program and wanted to give you the background on it, give you the opportunity to ask questions, provide some feedback and just generally get you re-acquainted with the program that we are basically revamping. We had a facade grant program out there for a number of years. It's been fairly dormant for the last couple of years and with a change in funding source for it, we took the opportunity to open up all of the parameters around it and do a fresh rollout. In part, this was made possible by our new, by the hiring of our new Economic Development Project Manager, Katie Hernandez, which you'll hear from in a few minutes. She really worked on the details of this and you'll see that in the presentation as we talk about this morning. She started with us this summer and also has been very active in helping with the administration of our Small Business Recovery Grant. So also good opportunity this time for you to meet her in this strange Zoom world. Next slide. So as I said, it's a revamp of a program that we've had for a while that really works to foster commercial reinvestment in our neighborhood areas. Um, the program will be targeted at neighborhood, commercial corridors and districts and our commercial building stock, really intended to provide financial assistance to those property owners with the intent of raising the property values in our neighborhoods and to enhance the quality of life in our neighborhoods. Next slide.
Hi, this is Katie Hernandez with Office of Economic Development, so I'll jump in here. We, uh, this slide just kind of overviews how this program aligns with the city government vision that has been identified through the Plan DSM initiative of the city of Des Moines. So, um, you know, a vibrant capital city, great neighborhoods, regional economy, certainly, this program will, will, will give small businesses a boost and, and contribute to the regional economy as a whole. Community sustainability, there are, there's a piece of the scoring criteria that, that speaks to sustainability measures and efforts through these projects and then opportunities for leisure, so, so contributing to the quality of life standard here in Des Moines. And then tremendous pride in the Des Moines community. We know that our community really supports small businesses and, you know, we get excited about a new, new business announcement. So just kind of speaking to the, the, the vision of, of the city and how this program elevates that. We, we recognize that this program really focuses on the real estate improvements and the building stock within the city, focusing on the neighborhoods in, in the city and, but we did want to kind of include some small business statistics as we anticipate that the, this program will will gain or garner interest from our small business community. So I'm just kind of throwing out some small business statistics with, from small business impact in the economy.
So as I said, this, the, the Neighborhood Commercial Revitalization Program is a revamp of a facade grant program that we had for a number of years. It was that program, that former program was funded with CDBG funds. We found over time that those funds were difficult for small businesses to utilize. There were a number of standards about low wages that were that frankly were kind of counter to the intention with some of the small business work that we like to do where we, where we work with people who are looking at higher wage jobs. It didn't align very well with, with real estate improvements necessarily and there were a number of monitored, monitoring requirements that small businesses weren't necessarily equipped to track over time. So with the, these number of limitations, the council earlier this year shifted the CDBG funds that we had been using for this program to other eligible uses within the city and backfilled that with general fund dollars. So we believe the program will be easier to utilize for the small business community, the entrepreneurial community, and the smaller-scale redevelopment community, which this program is intended to serve. Next slide.
So we'll jump into the program overview and some details of the program. So some eligibility requirements, the applicant must be the property owner, business tenant with, or, or business tenant with written permission from the property owner to make improvements. It is a, a one-to-one matching grant of sorts, so the, the requirement is a non-city investment of at least 50% into the, into the project and then the agreement to create or retain jobs as a result of the project. So that's a, a section under chapter 15A of the state code that allows us to facilitate this program. Projects must begin within one year of grant approval. Taxes must be up to date on the, on the, on the parcel and private, private entities and nonprofit organizations are eligible for the program. Ineligibility, the project could not, cannot have been issued a building permit prior to approval. So basically, just speaking to retroactive funding, if, if the project has already started, we, you know, we don't, we don't want to fund those, those projects that are already underway. Residential, primarily residential properties are ineligible and then business types that are discouraged from applying include liquor and tobacco stores, adult entertainment and product stores, pawn shop, check cashing and payday loans, car dealerships and gas stations. So some eligible projects under this program, so exterior site improvements and facade renovations, kind of speaking to the exterior improvements of the building, building stabilization, roof repair, grease trap interceptor, energy-efficient HVAC systems, fire sprinklers, electric and plumbing upgrades to the building, bringing those build, those, those properties within, within code requirements. So ineligible costs include interior finishes and soft design costs, sweat equity or self-performed work and then parking lot improvements, standalone parking lot improvements. So those would be allowed as long as there's a building improvement as part of the overall project. So the funding, the, the funding mechanism is a reimbursement. We can kind of look at the, the table to see the, the amounts to be potentially awarded. So all of the pro, or all of the, all the funds will be a reimbursement. So that, you know, that, that helps make sure that the city's investment is, you know, controlled to the actual project cost and lien waivers and invoices are are required and will be reviewed by city staff. The city managers authorized to award contracts equal to or less than $50,000 and then grants, grants are, are, like I said, it's a, it's a, it's a matching program, so up to $100,000. The applicant's eligible for 50% of qualifying costs and then after that, it's a, it's a graduated scale. So you can see that it tops out at a max award of $160,000 per project and that would be for, for for projects And that would be for, for, for projects above $500,000. So there's kind of an example, scenarios of, of project cost and what they would, what they would potentially be eligible for as a city, city match.
So we intend to roll out the application for this here over the next several days. We have funding available at $340,000. We think, and this just depends on how budgeting finance issues go over the next several months. But we expect that additional funds that were reprogrammed would become available over the course of the next year. And we'll basically judge that working with Nick and his finance group based on the demand that we see in this first round of applications. We, we intend to have the application period open for about six weeks. And then we'll be scoring those applications and recommending funding award levels based on what we see. We'd like to get to the point where future rounds of funding over the next couple of years can just be made on a rolling basis, recognizing that annual application periods don't necessarily line up with project schedules. So we'd ideally like to have funding available such that we could, we could do that over time. But these first couple of rounds, we do expect will be competitive. Understanding from our contacts and networks in the community that there's likely to be more applications and funding available for the next year or so. And then we'll report back to you on how that's going and look at funding requests that are commensurate with, with the demand and availability of funds. Next slide.
Hey, Erin, just, yes, sorry, I had my hand up. Just a real quick question. Explain to me, so if you're not using CDBG funds, so this is coming out of our general fund?
Yeah, I believe so. I'd look to Nick to confirm that, but I believe so.
That is correct. Okay, and so you're eliminating the, the Davis Bacon Rule that we have with the CDBG funds?
Yes, we are.
Okay, and, and the reason for that is what?
I, it was somewhat, it was somewhat difficult to administer, and we found that a number of the improvements that building owners wanted to make were not in a type of work where the market had wages at that level.
Okay, and then another que, so you're adding in nonprofit properties?
Yes, within our scoring, we're looking at them as having to be pretty catalytic in the neighborhoods in which they exist. But I think we can, that there are a couple of examples where we think that there are some properties that are dragging down the quality of a commercial corridor that with improvements, with ownership transitions and improvements could improve the prospects of surrounding properties as well.
Okay, we, can you send us, or maybe it's later in the slide, the scoring criteria? Will we have that before you roll this out? So the...
Absolutely, and I think it may have been included in the information
Maybe I missed it.
That was provided. I am not, I'm not 100% sure, but yes, absolutely. The answer to your question is yes.
Okay, thank you.
Next slide.
Okay, so scoring, scoring of the applications submitted. So there's a designated committee to review and score applications. The committee is comprised of separate, staff representatives from several departments or divisions within the city, including Planning and Urban Design, Legal, Civil and Human Rights Commission, OED, and then City Managers Office. And scores will be based on the following categories. Visible improvements and catalytic impact, those will carry the most significant weight of the score. Financial leverage, project scale, and then community impact are also categories within the scoring criteria. And we will send that along to, to City Council for, for review. So the process, the, the project, we're, we're requiring that the projects go through the city's pre-application conference. So this is really the, the development review of the project. And the pre-application is, is where the applicant will bring their project to, to the, the, the conference. And there are several staff representatives from different departments to kind of weigh in on the project. So this is through the, the Planning and Urban Design Division of the city. And really the intent as part of the funding program is to kind of catch anything at the beginning of the process. So if there are any unknowns as part of the project that the city might be able to weigh in on as part of a, like a code requirement or something like that, that may not have been considered. That's, that's the intent of this step of the process. The applicant then submits the application for this funding program, the Neighborhood Commercial Revitalization Program. The application gets reviewed for complete completion and eligibility. The, the project is scored, grant amount is, grant amount is recommended. And then there's an execution of the contract. And follow, only following the execution of the contract will the distribution of funds happen. So the, the distribution of funds requires a, a submission of the receipt or lien waiver and the invoice for the, for each project that was done and is being requested for reimbursement. So we have a pretty significant interest already in the program even prior to rolling this out. So we have 11 parties that have indicated interest in the program for, for commercial properties throughout the city. There's potentially more than $1.3 million in reinvestment at this point. And that's, those are really only counting projects that have disclosed a, a project scope. So they're, they're, you know, we, we anticipate more than, more than that in, in potential reinvestment. And then distribution of information about this program. So we'll be working with the Chambers of Commerce, Real Estate Associations, Iowa State University Extension, and then several other community-based organizations to make sure that we're, you know, we're touching several different organizations throughout the city. And then we, these are just past projects from the former Neighborhood Commercial Revitalization Program. And with that, we're available for any questions, anything that we missed. Erin, you can, you can jump in if there's anything that I missed as part of this.
Anybody have any questions? Counsel? Bill?
Thanks, Mayor. You say you got 11 in the, in the pipeline. Can we get a, a list of who those are right now? I'd be kind of interested to see who's already qualified. And of course, my year's really perked up. I, I know there's quite a few areas around here that come to mind, and I'd like, I think we've already talked about them, but I'd like to see where we're at right now.
Sure, we can get you that list. And it, they're just, they, they aren't qualified in any way. They're just groups, entities, owners that have reached out to us over the course of the last 18 months or so with projects that they are working on, properties they own, ideas they have for improvements to real estate in the neighborhoods. So yes, we can absolutely send you that list. But I, I do want to help you understand that they are, they are in no way endorsed at this point. They are just entities that have expressed interest.
All right, thank you. Josh?
Yeah, how, how does this work with other city incentives or funds? I assume it doesn't impact abatement eligibility. Like, are, are these things layered on, or is this meant to sort of fill a gap where perhaps abatement and TIF are not available?
These are intended to be layered on. So we could envision that we would work with potentially commercial property in an Invest DSM neighborhood. And there could be Invest DSM funds associated with a project as well as something coming from this Neighborhood Commercial Revitalization Program. We could work with a property owner in an urban renewal district and work on a TIF rebate sort of structure in addition to these funds. It is, it is possible to layer them, certainly. But by and large, we think that this program fills a gap where other funding sources don't necessarily exist or don't make sense. So oftentimes, what we find with some of these smaller scale programs or smaller scale ambitions entrepreneurs is that they don't necessarily have the capital resources to withstand a rebate sort of program out of a TIF. Or that relief of taxes out of tax abatement don't necessarily fill the gap that these projects are needing. This is, this is almost upfront funds. As Katie explained, they will be done on a reimbursement basis. So they aren't white upfront funds, but they can be used almost as such. So we believe that this, that this program really fills a gap where other programs don't address the needs that some of these smaller scale projects out in the neighborhoods need.
Well, so the 11 that are in the pipeline, how, how many of those are also looking at, for example, TIF or potentially Invest DSM funding? And then could a project like this be eligible for, say, NDC funding on top of? That was one that we didn't mention, but I think I saw Abby on the, on the list here.
Yes, I think that we certainly would work with NDC on these funds. Out of the list of 11, and I'll lean on Katie for a few more specifics there, but out of that list of 11, I'm not aware of any where we are working actively on TIF sorts of incentives with them. So I think by and large, the 11 that we're looking at right now would be funded out of this program without other city incentives. That's not to say that they, they could be eligible for tax abatement, and they could be projects where Invest DSM may be involved. Katie, can you, can you speak anymore to the layering of funds from either Invest DSM? Am I off on the TIF incentives? Any other layering that you know of?
Yeah, no, you're, you're correct. We, I don't, I don't believe we've identified any that have indicated interest in TIF. There may be a couple that landed in Invest DSM targeted area. But we also talked with Invest DSM about potentially either layering funds or if, or if there's a, maybe a project that is maybe a smaller scope that Invest DSM, their commercial program, takes on that project depending on capacity within their program. So I think there's multiple avenues that we could take. But as far as interested, interested parties in this program, I think only two have landed in the Invest DSM boundaries.
Much like the blighted property programs that we have, where I think we have made efforts to be citywide. This is, this is really an effort to, to make the funds available citywide. Yes, they could be layered with Invest DSM, but really our focus is to work throughout the cities in all of the neighborhoods.
Joe?
Thanks, Mayor. Will, will we, before all these are awarded to each project, will they be on the agenda, or it just, is it internally going to be done?
So we have various award levels. Anything that is under $50,000 would be at the city manager's discretion. Anything that is over $50,000 would be on your agenda for, for your consideration.
And those are 50-50 match? So if you got $50,000, you'd put in $50,000 of your own. Is that, is that how this is going to work?
Yes, at least $50,000.
Okay.
All right, are there any other questions? Josh, again?
Yeah, so this is available citywide. I mean, is there any targeting that goes on with this program, either in the, the scoring? Or this is pretty much a, a, any building that sort of meets the criteria could, could apply and, and use these dollars?
Any project throughout the city can apply and receive these dollars. At this point, we are not targeting particular areas. As we, you know, as we look at, as we look at revitalization planning programs in various parts of the city, we could shift that. And if we do, we will, we will certainly make the council aware and, and, and provide input to that. But at this point, we are citywide.
Anybody else?
Erin, will you provide us like a semi-annual report of how it's been distributed or a quarterly report of everyone that's been awarded?
Absolutely.
Email or something to all of us so we know how it's working through our wards and, and throughout our city?
Yes, absolutely. And, you know, I expect that this will likely be at some point an annual kind of reporting that we will want to do. But initially, you know, we're going to, we have a, we have a chunk of money, the $340,000, and we will report to you on how that was awarded. You'll certainly see anything come forward that is above the, that is above the $50,000 level. But we'll also report to you on those grants that are under that $50,000 threshold.
Carl?
So will this, would this be a tool for some that, you know, doesn't meet some of the zoning requirements that have to do fencing and, and parking lot improvements and landscaping? So this is going to be a tool in their toolbox to be able to help them, correct?
It could be used for those sorts of improvements. However, we are not allowing solely parking lot landscape requirements to be a project. It needs to be in conjunction with a building improvement as well.
Okay.
But oftentimes, that's, oftentimes, that's where we see those needs for those site plan requirements that they kick in is when somebody has an idea for a building improvement that they want to make. They're making an investment that kicks them into the requirement to make those site-wide improvements. And, and so that's what kicks it in. So this is a good program to help offset some of those costs as well.
Carl, I see your hand up.
Well, thank you, Mayor County. So Erin, I think in one of the earlier slides, you're excluding car sales or car lots. So does this, car dealerships, okay? So related to... Car dealerships, okay, so related to. Car sales like could a. Auto parts, auto detailing, so those could qualify?
Yes. You know, we wrestled with these. You know, full disclosure, the the nitty gritty behind the scenes, we wrestled with these quite a bit, honestly, and. We have found that every time we come up with an absolute cannot do something. There's a compelling reason for somebody who seems to be disallowed, so you know. We mean it when we say we we discourage these uses from applying, but. By the same token, there may be, there may be some circumstance that we cannot imagine at this moment in time. Where something would make sense to help out a neighborhood.
And Erin, piggybacking on a email exchange that we had in the last week. About building improvements and the the question is, wow, we have to improve our parking lot at the same time. That really that's kind of piling on to their. Renovation expenses, could this could these dollars help with that project?
Yes, they could, as long as they're part of a building improvement as well.
Okay. And you'll let that party know, or should I let that party know that? That this might help make that come together?
Yes, you can, you may you may do that that outreach on this. I will say that that this that this program is really. By function of its name. Yeah, neighborhood commercial.
Got it, okay, all right, thanks.
Anyone else? Scott, I'm not seeing other hands up, any comments that you have?
Ma- Mayor, real quick, can I just jump in real quick and just ask one quick question?
Yeah, I suppose, I just didn't see your hand up, Joe, sorry.
I here, let me raise my hand.
No, you don't need to, you're you've you've got it, but.
Well, I just didn't.
Thanks for asking.
So when you say neighborhood, does it have to adjoin? The neighborhood like in like an N two or something like that for this to be awarded?
No, we have not restricted it by zoning classification.
So it could be on a commercial corridor, not necessarily in a neighborhood?
Yes, absolutely, it can be on a commercial corridor.
Okay, thanks Mayor.
Yep, Scott?
No further comments, I appreciate the input from council. Hopefully, it's it's better understood how this program is is positioned. And it's it's out there working, it's another tool in the toolbox, so. That's that's the two topics we have for this morning. There's there's the opportunity for council to report out mayor on any boards and commissions if they want it.
All right. Anybody, Joe, your hands up again?
Yeah, nothing with the board commission, I just didn't know if everybody was on the line. I did want to do. Keep Supervisor Marl in our prayers, he did lose his wife on Saturday from a fall at their home. Just for the folks, I I know I mentioned that earlier, but I didn't know if everybody was on the line. Just want to let everybody know, thanks Mayor.
Yep. All right, I want to thank all of our panelists in the council. Josh, you have your hand up?
Yeah, well, I wanted to follow up on an issue that I think Connie raised. At the tail end of our meeting, the if the meeting was being canceled when when this didn't work out about. The streaming and and posting of of this meeting. You know, I know in the past we've done a better job of, I think, posting the presentations. Online and I'd like us, I I think Connie suggested that we. Post these meetings and the presentations, or maybe it was just the meetings, but. I I wanted to follow up on that because I thought that was a good suggestion and I'd like us to get back to posting. The presentations and the meetings from the work sessions. So that folks who are unable to attend a seven thirty A M work session might be able to. To at least follow along with the work and conversations that we're having.
All right, Scott and Jeff, you want to make comment on that?
Well, can I, your mayor, her mayor, this is Kay.
Please.
I always post the presentations after the meetings, they're always available when they're presented to me. So I always have been doing that, that's not anything out of the ordinary. They're available after the work sessions are held.
All right, thanks Kay, Scott, Jeff, any detail?
No further details, as Kay has mentioned, the presentations are made available immediately after the meeting, so.
Apparently, Your Honor, we have. Treated work work sessions differently than workshops. And my my suggestion. To the council and advice of the council would be that there's absolutely no harm. At all in posting and live streaming. The work sessions just as we do council meetings. Or the formal workshops that used to take place in the council chambers. At at least until the pandemic. Is over because that would cut down on some of the confusion, both external and internal, so. I I would have absolutely no issue at all with with all of the meetings being. Live streamed on every media that we have available.
All right, thanks Jeff, Connie?
I I was gonna follow up that I think that's important. I think a lot of the things that we do in our work sessions are important to the citizens. And I believe that we should continue. I know that they got away from it for a while, but I think we need to go back to it, especially during this period where we are. All which will be for a while, so I think it's important that we get this information to make it easier. So appreciate if we could get that done.
Okay, and and we'll have a conversation as we look to go back to in person on how to handle those. I know the council. Enjoyed the more informal settings, sitting around tables and talking through issues. That the public's invited, obviously, to to sit in, listen, and when we get back to in person, we can. We can talk about maybe recording those audio only, might make sense to to stream the audio at least to the public, so. We'll we'll plan to have that conversation as we open back up to in-person meetings.
Connie, your hands up again?
No, I was just gonna say, I know that some of us because of the filming or whatever, but I think that at least the minimal is audio. I don't really, you know, even if we're in an informal setting, I think we can still film that. But we can discuss that further, but I think it's important that our work sessions are available to the public, just as our meetings are.
Anything else? All right, I want to thank all of our panelists and council members and thank. Erin and her staff for walking us through the work that they're doing. And thank you all and thank also the the public. And again, let us know and either through the city clerk's office or the city manager's office if you have any. Follow-up questions or concerns. Thank you all for attending this morning. This meeting's adjourned.